Calling to order the Monday, February 5th, 2024 Meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Valani?
Here.
Mayor Dean?
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Valani. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now come to the portion of the meeting for public comments. This is when you have the opportunity to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart. Please direct all your comments to the chair. If your matter requires follow-up, please leave your contact information on the table outside of this door. Council members will not engage you in discussion, but it doesn't mean we don't care. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak. Ms. Mitchell, do you have any correspondence to be entered into tonight's record?
I do, Madam Mayor. Joshua Hunter, Berkeley submitted the following questions/comments. One, regarding M424 City Hall reconfiguration. While he feels it is a worthwhile project, he thinks it should be delayed, given the new deficit spending proposed in the upcoming budget amendment later this agenda. Two, M624 Berkeley Days event. He unfortunately thinks the time has come to end the event. The new proposed rules and safety measures may be necessary, but they are heavy-handed with vague exceptions for a tiny four-day community fair. And three, M824 budget amendment. He is surprised to see the current fiscal year budget for the general fund going from a $222,000 surplus per the September 2023 amendment to a $93,000 deficit. He further listed out the five items of new expenditures. He said he is very concerned about the city's financial controls and listed out further questions and comments he would like addressed.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comments, I will close public comments at this time. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read, sorry, the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular City Council meeting on Monday, January 8th, 2024, and the special City Council meeting on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Baker. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M424, matter of approving the agreement with Allied Building Services for the design build work consisting of a new clerks area and other office reconfigurations at City Hall, and it costs not to exceed $60,590.50. Please also allocate $12,000 for construction contingencies. Funds for this project will be coming from account
Is there a motion to approve M0424?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Hunnen with support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're joined this evening by Alex Brown, our Facilities Manager, who is taking through the more technical details of this. But just as a general process, we did allocate $100,000 to updates at City Hall. We didn't know then what we know now, which is the passage of some state statutes that changed the nature of voting in the state of Michigan, have made our current configuration basically unable to accommodate early voting without changes that we're proposing here today. There's also a couple of security benefits that we have for this project, which was really driving the nature of this reconfiguration previously. The City Manager's Office is the last office that is generally acceptable to the, or generally accessible to the public. And so we've got this, my area, the finance area and the clerks area, which are each going to switch positions. I will be moving into the area that was formerly the City Clerks. My assistant will then be moving with me as well. The clerks office will be completely overhauled and moved to the area that the finance is now, creating the election center and early voting center, utilizing this room as precinct, our early voting precinct at times, since it's no longer going to serve as precinct one. And then our finance office, the staff that remain in that department are then going to see, move into my soon-to-be subdivided office. So in this way, we gain security benefits. We gain the ability to hold our election center nearby, and then we also make a better use of the space that we actually do have. This building hurts for space, and yet also sometimes wastes a ton of space, too. So unfortunately, we are still using only a fraction of our building, but we are, what we have, we will use better after this project.
Thank you. It does seem to be a better utilization of the space. So, Mr. Brown?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. He kind of encompassed most of the project. I can add a few little details that he's not, didn't mention tonight. This project will be about a two-week project. It's not going to take place till after our presidential primary, which is coming up on February 27th. There may need to be some schedule shifting in the City Hall access, just because there will be a major construction project happening in three different areas of the building. So we may, we may have to do some schedule shifting or some miniature closures or something like that, but that'll all be determined as we get closer to the project. We're going through Allied Building Services out of Detroit, and they are part of the Michigan My Deal Extended Purchasing Program, which is similar to like a Sourcewell program that guarantees certain prices and state contracts that we're able to take advantage of through being a municipality. So outside of that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer the best I can.
Any discussion from council on this? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you for bringing this to us. I agree that this certainly seems like an appropriate reconfiguration to better use of space, provide the safety and greater access to the departments for the public as well. You mentioned about two weeks. That's really cool. Do we know if this were to pass tonight, when we would commence that? Are we looking, you said not after, you know, until after the 27th, but is this a March thing?
Yeah, I'm thinking early March, mid-March possibly. It's going to just kind of be based on some lead times for materials. Kind of, we're still dealing with a lot of that COVID lead time issues.
Yep.
And just what works best with this, least amount of disruption for the working of the City Hall, so we don't have to shut down maybe as much, or if at all, just to keep it functioning as possible.
Thank you. That was my second question. If you could elaborate just a little bit, if somebody wants to come in and conduct some business, you know, get a permit or, you know?
Right.
Do, you know, do whatever they need to. How will they, will they be able to be served?
Yeah, I, I think for the majority, yes, there may be some, some disruptions to the normal day-to-day service here, but I don't expect anything major. And similar to when we did our Phase 1 renovation of the main area up there, we did have a short shutdown, but it was, we managed everything via email and phone calls from working from home and remotely. So we, we did okay during then, so I expect the same.
Great, thank you. And so it's like if anybody were coming upon a deadline that was impacted because of this in terms of a payment or something?
Correct.
We have processes in place to?
Yeah, absolutely.
To mitigate that, and that's cool. And then I've been real pleased with the social media outreach that we've been able to do in prior projects to communicate with residents, and I imagine there'll be a similar approach taken this time?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll coordinate with the Communications Director and have all the proper messaging out in plenty of time, so people will be aware of any disruptions or closures.
Terrific. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have one question. So when we use the My Deal Extended Purchase Program, does that not go to bid then?
Well, it's the, it lets us buy from the purchasing program, and it kind of eliminates that step, because they have set pricing that they're not allowed to charge overtime rates or certain higher rates based on the state contract they've signed. So it kind of lets us, I don't want to say sidestep it, but kind of avoid that, that RFP process and bid process.
And you don't think a bid would have come in lower?
I don't, no. I think for this amount of work and everything out the door, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape. I feel confident with this price and with, with the company.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, to answer the Councilmember's question, vendors have to go through a bidding process and a competitive bidding process to become the My Deal Preferred Vendor. And so this is a service that's extended to municipalities and really anybody, any public entity that wants to take advantage of it, where they do the front end for us, and then we take advantage of the fruits of those labors. So this was competitively bid, it just wasn't bid at our level.
Got it.
It was bid in order to become the preferred vendor on the My Deal program.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned this as a security being a benefit of the change. So my question to both of you is, does the facility go through an annual security assessment or threat matrix, and are we doing this because of any existing security concerns, or is this just being prudent in 2024?
We can talk specifics more directly at a later time, but this is prudence.
Proactive instead of reactive is like the way I like to say it, just because there's such unfettered access to the City Manager's Office and to the Finance Department currently, I think reconfiguring things and having some further measures in place will make the whole building for the staff and for residents secure, more secure.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, one additional note. It'll come up during the budget conversation, but in case anyone tunes out by then, this project, again, we had planned for a project like this way back in April and May, prior to some of the state changes. But the city does have a court fund, which is left over from when the 44th District Court was still half located in our facility. They're exiting, left behind, a fund that is specifically designated for building improvements. And so anybody that will look to our budget will see a transfer from the court fund into the general fund. This is a general fund-funded project, but these costs are offset by those funds from the court. So this is not a necessarily tax funder, taxpayer-funded project. It was actually funded through fines and fees that were accumulated while the court was still located here.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Baumgarten. Anyone else? Any public comment? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M0424 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M524, matter of authorizing the mayor to execute a third-party vehicle lease agreement between Smart and the City of Berkeley for public transportation services, primarily designed for senior citizens and persons with disabilities.
Is there a motion to approve M0524?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, time to time, through our partnership with Smart, get to lease vans that we use to provide transportation services for our seniors. Dan McMenon joins us today. Now, as only, Dan McMenon is doubly qualified to speak on this topic. Not only is he our Senior Services Coordinator by day, in addition to being Batman at nights, he's also currently serving as our interim Parks and Recreation Director.
Great, thank you. Mr. McMenon?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So what you had before you was a lease agreement for a new vehicle for, from Smart to be added to our fleet. This is replacing our 26-passenger vehicle that we returned to Smart in February of 2023 due to roof issues and things that weren't able to be fixed. We started this process back in May of 2021 with an application. We were notified then in July of '21 that we were going to be awarded the replacement, but then supply chain issues took over, and here we are in 2024, signing the contract and getting a new vehicle. We are excited for this new vehicle, because it will allow us to take additional people on trips, allow additional transportation services in our daily transportation, and then it gives us the flexibility of having three vehicles instead of two. We have a vehicle right now that could go in for air conditioner maintenance, but we haven't been able to send it, because that would leave us with a singular vehicle. So the, the flexibility is very helpful. And then it also allows for the mechanics, whether it be here or at Smart, to have longer periods of time to work on those vehicles. So not only is this, is this going to help with our trips, but also our daily transportation, which, to be a part of our daily transportation, you can call the community center Monday through Friday between 9:00 and noon. We can be called, our phone number is 248-658-3470, and asking for transportation. We go from 8 Mile to 16 Mile, north and south, Loser to John R., east and west, and a suggested donation of $5 for a round trip, or $3 for one-way, one-way transportation for our daily senior transportation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any public comment on this agenda item?
I'd love it.
Yeah. Any discussion from council? Yes, Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for, for bringing this. This has been quite a journey for, for you and the team, and, and hopefully this will now enable many wonderful journeys for folks for many years to come. When approximately might we take receipt of, of the vehicle?
So from my understanding, it should be fairly soon. Once the contract is signed, I know they are working on putting decals in partnerships with this, with our, in our case, with the City of Berkeley. So hopefully within the next couple of months, we can look forward to adding this vehicle to, to the two we already have.
That's neat. And of course, this is just off, off to the side. I'm wondering, like, you know, if we can kind of name our vehicles. Is this going to be like the Berkeley mover? You know, give it a nickname?
You know, I saw that the snowplows get fun names, so maybe I'll, maybe I'll start thinking.
Yeah, maybe ask some of the, the regular riders, like, hey, what do you know?
Absolutely.
Have a nickname for it, right? You know, I'm crazy. I name my cars and stuff like that.
I love that.
Anyway, just, just thought it'd be fun.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the excellent work.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from council? Well, Mr. McMenon, thank you so much for all that you do and continue to do for our Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you.
I know that the senior programs are near and dear to your heart, and you were Director of that for so, so long, and we're very appreciative. And now in this interim Parks and Rec Director role, we're happy to see you.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M0524.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M624, matter of approving the Berkeley Days event, beginning May 9th, 2024, and ending on May 12th, 2024, located at the Berkeley Community Center, 2400 Robina. Approval is conditional upon submitting required items and documents before event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M0624?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since the last year's event, the committee has gone to work to make sure that we can bring back this event in a safe manner, in a way that assures any partygoer, any festival goer, any carnival goer, that this is going to be an event that they can rely on and feel safe while attending, and also have their children of all ages there as well. So you are joined this evening by Lieutenant Hadfield, who was one of the many officers and command officers that worked with this group, as well as our own Emergency Manager, Jack Blanchard, who's worked closely with this group. And then you're joined with pretty much the whole group as well. The committee themselves are all here to, to tell you about the, how 2024 is going to be the best year yet.
Great, I can't wait to hear who's up first.
Hello, I'm Denise Downin, Chair of Berkeley Days. So I stand before you today to reflect upon the highs and lows that defined our city's narrative over the past year. A significant milestone, our 100th celebration since the induction of Berkeley as a village, was marked with joyous festivities, spectacular fireworks that illuminated our spirits. However, woven into the fabric of that celebration was an unforeseen challenge. A record number of attendees, not all with good intentions, compelled us to abruptly shut down the fair and seek refuge in our homes. For a long time, we held the presumption that Berkeley was, was immune to such negative experiences. Yet last year taught us a sobering lesson. Anything can happen anywhere, at any time, to anyone, without warning. In response to this revelation, we are compelled to take proactive measures to safeguard the well-being of our community during future events. Berkeley Days serves as a vital platform for various youth, community service, and nonprofit organizations to encourage and meaningful fundraising efforts. The Berkeley Days Association, composed of representatives from these diverse groups, provides a platform for these organizations to raise funds, funds, and heighten awareness to their causes that contribute to the betterment of our community. By participating in Berkeley Days, these organizations have a unique opportunity to connect with the community, showcase their mission, and garner support. Remarkably, the cumulative impact of Berkeley Days has seen the generation of hundreds of thousands of dollars through its storied history. To ensure the safety of all who partake in our festivities, we are proposing a comprehensive security plan for next, this year's event. This plan involves the installation of a secure perimeter fence with two designated entry and exit points, accompanied by two additional gates, in case swift evacuation is necessary. Acknowledging the importance of a collective effort, we'll be introducing a nominal fee to access the fairgrounds. In addition to this, we are committed to having a robust security presence, featuring private security personnel and collaborating closely with our local law enforcement. This combined effort is aimed at fostering a better crowd control, enhancing overall safety, and creating an environment where everyone can enjoy the event without fear. Our decision to change, charge an admission fee is not just a financial consideration, but a strategic move to deter individuals with ill intentions from attending. By implementing these measures, we hope to reclaim a sense of security and community that defines Berkeley. Berkeley Days isn't just an event. It's a jubilant celebration that weaves together the threads of history, community bond, and giving back. Berkeley Days stands as a living historical tradition that bridges the past and the present, showcasing the unique character in our community spirit. In conclusion, these proposed changes represent a collective commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. We seek your support and understanding as we embark on this journey to make our event secure, enjoyable, and memorable for all the right reasons. Together, we can ensure that Berkeley continues to be a place where celebration and community thrive.
Thank you.
In addition to, I'm sure you're all going to ask this anyway, so I'm just going to jump to it. In addition to having extra security and a perimeter, we're also going to implement a no-bag policy. Diaper bags will be permitted, and purses will be permitted, but they are subject to be checked. So there will be no backpacks or anything of that nature allowed.
No masks.
No masks.
There's one correction we said. There's actually going to be, there's two personnel gates and four vehicle gates that can be opened in case of emergency to get people out. There'll be a personnel gate at Robina and a personnel gate on the, on the south end, a vehicle gate on Robina, a vehicle gate on Sineole, and two vehicle gates coming off Oxford for emergency, for bringing supplies in and for getting people out in a hurry. Those gates, those first big gates will all be locked, but we'll have a ton of keys for them. So the people on, and the security, people on the staff, police will all have keys to those gates, so we can open them if we have to in a hurry.
Thank you. Yes.
What else?
What else?
Any public comment on this agenda item?
The public is all in the committee.
Okay. Discussion from council. Any questions from council? Any comments? Councilmember Hunnen?
Yeah. No event is going to be risk-free, but I think the balance of security here is reasonable. I'm, you know, I've talked to Public Safety on what's here. I, I think this is, I'm very satisfied and feel very secure with this going forward, and very pleased. I know you guys worked very hard to make this happen, and I really appreciate the effort that you put in and, and bringing this to us, and that we can continue to have the Berkeley Days in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, and thank you. I echo my colleagues' comments. The committee has done a terrific job with this. Your prepared comments were very thoughtful and well, and well-delivered, so thank you for that. Appropriately so, a lot of our discussion this evening thus far has been on the security provisions that are being put in place. And that's, that's fundamental to ensuring a safe and fun event. So I'd like to give you guys a minute to actually talk about the fun part of Berkeley Days. What are some of the things that are going on, you know? What, you know, what are the rides and the events and the things and stuff that folks should, should be excited about? Anything that you'd like to share?
Yes, so Saturday morning, we will have the 5K race, walk race. Registration for that can be done online, and then you can also register in person, starting at 7:30 in the morning on race day. Race will commence at 8:30 in the morning. We will have our softball game. The day of the week will be determined. We have to work that schedule out and see what's going to work best for everyone. We plan to bring in the stage again, have live bands. Taste of Berkeley will be returning. That's always a fan favorite. And we are looking into bringing back the Kids Zone that we were supposed to have last year. So that Kids Zone will be a, like a Sunday fun day, activities for kids 12 and under and their families. Everything will be free, and those activities will be sponsored by the Oakland County Mobile Recreation.
Nice.
That sounds great. And for more information, if somebody wanted to look into that a little bit more, where might they go to, to get some additional details?
We're still building, but they can go to our website, berklidays.org, and there'll be a schedule of events there. There's contact information for anybody who's interested and would like to get involved. We're always encouraging organizations, school groups, to get involved. They can host an event, use this as a fundraiser. If they're not able to host an event, they're welcome to volunteer their time, and in return for their time, they will earn donations from the organization to help support them.
Fantastic, thank you.
Councilmember Black?
So as someone with three teenagers at, at Berkeley High, I love the opportunity to spy, I mean volunteer. I meant, I meant spy. But I also meant volunteer. So for, for parents like myself that would, that would love the opportunity, because obviously the more eyes you have, the more secure you are. For people that want to volunteer, where can we get more information? And are you accepting volunteers first?
We are always accepting, yes. We are always accepting volunteers.
That was a yes. Okay, big yes.
Yes. So again, if somebody is interested, they can go to that website. There is a contact form on there where they can send information directly. My phone number is there. You can always reach me at 248-904-4300. You can email us at berklidays@yahoo.com. So if you have more friends that are interested, send them our way.
You mean parents who wish to also spy?
Yes. That's what I meant on a DL.
You can see a whole lot from the beer tent.
I want to make sure my kids aren't at the beer tent.
Which is why you're there.
We're talking the same language. I'm loving it. Thank you.
Councilmember Valani?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think I want to echo my fellow councilmembers' comments about feeling good about the plan we have in place for this year, but also want to call out once again just the thanks that did go into planning last year. While there may have been a turn of events, that was not what we intended. Certainly with our Emergency Manager, the plans that he had in place, so, and with the support of our police and our mutual aid, we had something that could have been very, turned out very poorly, turned out while very scary. There were no serious injuries. And I think that is something that while we don't like that mark of what happened, we still need to be thankful for all of the work that went into place, so that that was the only outcome, and it wasn't worse. And so I feel very confident, given all the additional work that's gone in. And so I feel very confident, given all the additional work that's gone in, that even if something were to happen, we have very well-prepared people to take care of that.
Okay. Good. We're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-0624.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-724, matter of approving the inter-local agreement for participation in and creation of the Oakland County Building Officials Association Damage Assessment Mutual Aid Agreement.
Is there a motion to approve M-0724?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Black. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item comes to you by way of community development, as well as emergency management. Emergency Management Blanchard had observed that we did not, we did not currently have a participation agreement with this group, and is one of the items that we'd like to bring forth for your consideration in order to change. Draw your attention to the very detailed note from Director Kapilansky that details point-by-points why we feel this is worthwhile, as well as the other communities that benefited from this, and then also what it would take from us to fully enact it.
Thank you. Ms. Kapilansky.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I didn't bring a single piece of paper up, so I'm feeling fairly confident that you are going to support this. But really, I have to give all the credit to our emergency manager, Blanchard. He brought this to our attention. He provided a lot of the language that's in the memo, so we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, Jack is very good at that. What would you like to add, Jack? He's got a buyer.
The key point of this agreement is if we, if we have an emergency and a disaster is declared, the government requires us to put in a damage assessment within 72 hours. As you look around City Hall, you don't find much staff that's going to be able to get out there and do a damage assessment. We may have one or two people, but that, if it's a big area, that's going to be a problem. What this does is allows us to pick from other cities, building officials to come in, help us do this, and cover the first 72 hours to get the bases going. It's a mutual aid from building officials, and it's what we need because we don't have the resources, and none of the other small communities of the six, I think there's 66 CVTs in Oakland County and 36 belong to this already, will be the 37th. So it's just a way to make sure we, we get things done in a timely manner so that we can get the aid from FEMA that we need. And in conjunction with that, as of yesterday, the new damage assessment plan, which you signed, everybody signed, is going to go to the county tomorrow in conjunction with this inter-local agreement, so that we have all of our damage assessment stuff in place, up to date, and ready to go.
Excellent. Thank you. Any public comment? Discussion from council? Councilmember Patterson?
I just thank you both for the work that you put into this. I know it's a lot more than you're letting on, I'm sure, so, and the partnerships are something we always look forward to, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker.
Why, thank you. And, and again, thank you for the diligent work. I echo my colleagues' appreciation for the effort that goes into this. You make it look so easy. Can you talk a little bit more about the duration of the agreement? Is it in perpetu, um, for those of you that haven't had a chance to read the memo, obviously, you know, is it in perpetuity? Is it an annual thing, you know?
It's not annual. There's no, there's no end date. You can withdraw at any point with, what, 60 days notice, I think it is. You can withdraw from the agreement. But it's, most of the people that are in there have been in there for years, and I'm assuming that we will too, because our building official, I'm assuming she will, she belonged to this organization, and it's, it's an organization of building officials that does this, so it's, it's simple, it's going to help us out, and let it ride, let it go as long as we need it.
Excellent, thanks. I just wanted to let folks know who, who didn't have the chance to read the excellent memo about, you know, some of the parameters around this, so it's very good. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Blanchard, again, thank you for setting us up for success with regard to FEMA and all the safety measures that are in place. And I think a lot of people don't realize that in order to receive aid from FEMA, you have to have certain things in place, our emergency plan being one of them, and now this, it only continues to help our community, so thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
And on that note, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-0724?
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-0724 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-824, matter of authorizing the amendment of the 2023-24 budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve M-0824?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Each quarter, we bring forth budget amendments to the council for your consideration. If you, as you know, our fiscal year begins 1st of July and it ends on June 30th in, in the next year. So when we come forth, when we put together a budget, that process happens sometimes one year to 14 months ahead of when some of these expenditures come due. And so your best estimations sometimes don't always come to pass, and so budget amendments allow council the opportunity to amend, change course, come into, or consider new information, new challenges, and sometimes new revenues that come across the, our, our city. So this budget amendment is no, is no different. This reflects the halfway point of our fiscal year. So it's, so we see some early trends, we try to react to those, but this is not, we know that we'll have other amendments coming before you where we'll be able to better hone the revenue trends, the expenditure trends as they come along. But there are some things that we wanted to bring forth and, and put forth in front of the community, as well as council, to call attention to, things that we know did not go as planned for, for our budget. Some of them were read in the correspondence earlier. I do want to call note, as you recall, we had a vacancy at a finance director position recently. From the beginning of the fiscal year through the audits, we worked with Plant Moran. They did a broad range of services for us, including helping us prep for that audit, as well as helping us go through policies, procedures, kind of do a general internal audit of the health of that department, following some staff changes that we had in about this time last year. So that work is concluded, but there is a financed component to that. In total, that was about $84,000 in consulting fees that we had not budgeted for previously, but now had to, but feel like it was, was money well-spent. It allowed us to put ourselves in the best position to move forward and allow us to make some appropriate changes in that department. But that is in there under the financial, under the contractual services portion of this, under the finance department of the budget. So that is, the $84,000 is in there, it's not ongoing cost. I think it's important to call that detention. The next item, calling attention to the communications budget. We do have an ongoing contractual relationship with Sabo Public Relations that helps supplement the work of our communications director, not only during her onboarding process, but also ongoing, to make sure that our communications, our transparency, the way that we broadcast, all the wonderful things about our community cannot be hampered by just the capacity of one staff person, which is the, all we have related to this role. Sabo helps us put forth things like our newsletters, the buzz, helps supplement some of our social media strategies, but really is broad-based support for the communications department because we never want to be guilty of not telling our community about, about their community. And next up, I want to call attention to, in our planning, our community development department, there are a couple of budgets I want to call attention to. We have a contractual services, that's ongoing work that we're doing with HRC for their engineering and respond to plan reviews. And then also, we did have a contractual relationship with McCanna longer than what we anticipated for when we were first going through this budget process. We had hoped to have the building official position filled as of the first of the year. As you know from your previous meeting, we, we just had that contract come back before council with amendments. Now we'll see 15% of trade permit, 100% of trade permits, 15% of building permit revenues, whereas we used to have 65% of building trade, or building permit revenues going to McCanna to fund the inspection services. Now the building official has been in place since the, the 3rd of January, you'll see a substantive drop in those costs. Those are now done internally, in-house, so much of those expenditures, we feel, have come to an end, now managed internally. You'll only see trade permit inspection provided contractually on an ongoing basis. So those were unfortunate, but limited. We will have, in the third quarter budget amendments, some of the offsetting amounts that we had, that we had dedicated to the salary of the building official. Obviously, since they hired in at the halfway point, that amount will come down, but we'll have, we'll have those information prepared for you as we better hone the city's expenses in our third and fourth budget, fiscal, or amendments to our fiscal year. One thing that was noted in the communications as well, I want to get to, the, at the end of the fiscal year, our unassigned fund balance was at 27% of the expenditures for that previous year. Now, we know that this year, our grant-funded work is going to push those general fund expenditures higher than they traditionally have been. Roughly speaking, it was about 14 million. We got about $2 million in anticipated grant work happening in this fiscal year, so those expenditures are going to be higher. Our policy specifically states that our fund balance is a percentage of the, unassigned fund balance is a percentage of those expenditures, so we're already working off a higher number, so that percentage, even by not changing at all, can, can appear lower in comparison to the higher expenditures. So something that we're already aware of, are, we are working to make sure that we stay fully within the city's adopted fund balance policy, but you'll see that number come down a little bit from where we were as of June 30th, and that there's, I want to put some context as to why that is. It is not, you know, unfettered spending, it's that the standard we are trying to meet has increased, therefore, we need to rise up and, and go up as well. So we do see trends in revenues that aren't ready to be fully addressed through the budget amendment process that we know will offset some of our building department expenses, and then we need to see some of those dollars actually come in from our state and federal sources for grants too. So those will be ongoing. Again, we're at the halfway point, plenty more to be reviewed, but our spending is in line with where we had hoped it would be on nearly all of our accounts, but those items that I pointed out are worth saying, we did not anticipate those, and we need to adjust accordingly. Those are my long preamble to this.
No, thank you. It was comprehensive and informative, so I appreciate that. Mr. Baumgarten, any public input on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, so you mentioned about the community development position that some of the offset probably should have been reflected here with the salary, but wasn't. I think that's also the case with the finance director position and communications. Is that right?
True for the finance department, the communications portion of it, that position works in conjunction with the contractor, so that did not take away from the community development, or the communication director's salary.
Okay, so, so that part's reflected accurately, but.
But you're absolutely right on the finance director spot.
So, yeah, so some of the negative that we see is going to be offset when we appropriately account for those salaries that we didn't pay because we didn't have the people and why we're hiring the consultants to begin with. I think we also might want to look at our fund balance policy just to, when we have these big-ticket items and it causes these weird anomalies, in a, some way to smooth that out, to, because, you know, the financial picture really hasn't changed, but the number makes it look like it has, and so, so I don't know the answer. I don't know how to get the math to get there off the top of my head, but I think it might be worthwhile investigating a better way to do that, just to smooth those kinds of things out over time. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have two things. If, if there's any way we can get this just a little bit sooner in our packets, you know, I don't think I got it till later, it's just a lot of information to take in. And the other thing, just a side note, just putting personal salaries on there, if we could maybe leave those off in the future, you know, or combine them in a way where it's not calling out, I thought that was kind of.
Yeah, I'll take that note to our, our finance director. I wasn't a fan of that either.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-0824.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-0824 has passed. We've reached our communications portion of the evening. Ms. Mitchell, where are we?
Mayor Pro Tem Gavin.
All right, thank you, thank you, Your Honor. Brief update for me, Parks and Rec next meeting will be this Thursday, the 8th, at 7:00 PM at the Community Center, and the Library Board will be meeting on February 28th at 7:00 PM at the library. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
The next meeting of the Environmental Advisory Committee is on February 20th at 6:30 in the Public Safety Building. For the Berkeley Area Chamber, the next chamber chat is on February 16th at Avenue Real Estate on 12 Mile, 8:30 AM, and then coming up on March 15th, it will be at the American Legion at 8:30 in the morning. No need to register, you can just show up. And then also, the chamber would like to welcome one of our newest businesses, Jewels Pet Cuisine and Accessories, who had their ribbon cutting on, on Friday on 12 Mile Road. We are positively excited that you're here.
Positively, yes.
I did that for you, Councilmember Baker.
Woo!
And that is all.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
The Planning Commission met on, uh, Planning Commission met on the 23rd of January. There was approval of a facade change for a business going in on 11 Mile, and our next meeting for the Planning Commission will be Tuesday, the 27th of February, here in Chambers at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Committee for Technology and Engagement is continuing to be worked primarily by the communications director, so Ms. Flora is doing an outstanding job of keeping me updated. We're looking forward to the launch. And then on Thursday, I had the opportunity to do a joint Black History Month slash Veterans video for, my wife and I did, God, don't let me forget her. My wife, my wife and I, Major Retire Lorraine Black and I, had the opportunity to do a combination Black History Month slash Veterans promotion for the Oakland County, Oakland County Veteran Service Organization. It was a lot of fun, and Director Flora was there too for her support, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
Yes, the Tree Board met to discuss their plans for this coming year, and they've completed a report for council on what their accomplishments have been in this last year that will be circulating soon, and their next meeting is Monday, February 26th. The Zoning Board of Appeals will meet on Monday, February 12th. There's a, they're continuing to look at the variance for a gas station on 11 Mile, and there's two new cases, one a dimensional variance and one a parking variance. Then we have the Zoning Ordinance Steering Committee that's meeting this Wednesday, February 7th. And then finally, I have my talk with Dennis Office Hours coming up. It's this Saturday, February 10th, from noon to 2:00. Can stop by any time at the library with any questions or to share any concerns that you have. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Cool, thanks. Hey. The Historical Committee meets next week's Tuesday, the 13th, at 7 o'clock in the Public Safety Building, second floor conference room just across the street from us. You can read about them in the latest issue of the Berkeley Buzz magazine that's been mailed out to, to every household in the, in the city. It's excellent write-up, and thanks to, to Don and the team for, for that fantastic work. And then you can check them out at berkeleyhistory.com. The DDA meets the, the very next day, on Wednesday, the 14th, at 8:15 in the morning in the very same room, Public Safety Second Floor Conference Room. And for, for more information about the upcoming events and things that they're working on, you can visit them at downtownberkeley.com. And it was Morgan Freeman who once said, "I don't want a Black History Month. Black History is American history." And that, that struck a chord with me. And, and given that, you may know that every year, the Black History is, has a particular theme, and this year's is African-Americans and the Arts. This theme celebrates the many contributions of, of Black Americans to visual arts, music, cultural movements, and more. And there's many ways that, that we can all learn and enjoy and celebrate this, including, you know, visiting the Charles H. Wright Museum in Detroit. They have some, some tremendous displays and information there. You can watch movies and documentaries about African-American history that explore the history and culture and contributions to the arts. You can create art. I love tapping into that hemisphere of my brain and doing fun, creative things and, and get into that and maybe learn a new style or something like that. And of course, volunteering is a great way to get out and do positive things for the community as well. So please take those into consideration as you embrace this month and please stay safe and hug somebody that you love. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, I was had the opportunity to attend the Mishke Municipal Executives Winter Institute. It's a gathering of city managers from all across the state. We had about 215 of us this year, all huddled together, talking about the triumphs of our position, the challenges of our position, and what we plan to do in the future and the, you know, all the resources that are going to need to come along with it. As once, much like we said with the MML conferences, it is heartening to sit and talk to people who are going through the same thing that you're going through. So even if outside of the actual sessions they have, it is good to connect with individuals that know exactly where you're coming from, might have some great ideas on how to fix it, or might just join you in also adding their voice to the problem, which is impactful as well. So there are innumerable benefits that come along with it. So as I said in my update, on Friday, to you all, I want to say publicly, thank you for continuing to fund professional development, believe in the MME, Charlena Stevenson, my assistant, who is also a future local government leader as well, was able to attend as well. So just a hearty thank you for continuing to believe in professional development and the benefits that I can bring back to the city with that knowledge. I would also like to say, back in November, the city council adopted a strategic plan that's going to guide us over the next couple of years. Anybody interested in taking a look at that, that is on the website, under the city council's webpage. If you want to follow a social media link, there was a blast that went out today that brought people directly to it. It's, I think it's really interesting for anybody in the community to look to see where this body with administration wants to invest our resources and look at the future. It's different than the master plan, this is more tactile, this is more how we plan to get there. So I think anybody interested would really, really, it's time well-spent to look at that document in the community. And then last but not least, if you'll permit me a little personal privilege, next week is a very busy week in the Baumgarten household. It is back-to-back birthdays for us, so I would like to say happy birthday to Sam West and my wife Rebecca, so. That's all, Mayor.
Happy birthday to all of them. Mr. Christ.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to remind council that I do have an attorney-client communication that I will be sharing with you at the scheduled special meeting immediately following this meeting, and that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I had the honor and privilege of attending the State of the State address as the guest of Senator McMorro, and I can tell you, it was inspiring to hear our governor speak about all the things that our state, as a state, we've accomplished and things that are still being worked on. Just being in the Capitol is an incredible experience and the building itself is just stunning. And there are teams of people continually refurbishing year-round, all the time, and it's quite historical and awe-inspiring, quite frankly. I want to give kudos to Ms. Mitchell and her department for all the things that you've, that have been thrown at you that you're implementing so that it ultimately will be easy for your, our voices to be heard. You can vote so many ways now, early voting, AV voting, and actually on the day of and coming in and filling in the ovals. So thank you so much for your hard work on that. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Vilani. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Henon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.[1750.73]